Twenty eighth, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, um, before we get started, uh, this meeting is being held in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting laws, Mass. General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty. No public attendance will be permitted in person. The public can access this meeting via WebEx technology. Until further notice, the Burlington School Committee will hear public comment virtually only. Meetings are also broadcast live on the Burlington Cable Access TV as usual. If you're tuning in via WebEx, the, uh, the meeting number is, access code is two-three-four-two-nine-four-eight-four-nine-five-eight, and the meeting password is Tuesday. Okay, uh, first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes of the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded, see no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Sorry about that. Uh, next item on our agenda is public participation. This is a time for somebody who wants to speak to something that's not otherwise on the agenda. Uh, the school committee policy is any, uh, public participation, uh, is limited to three minutes. So, uh, is there anybody, uh, anybody remotely on the call that wants to participate in public, uh, participation? Please raise your hand.
Steve Moran is, has his hand raised.
Steve Moran. Hi, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, uh, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Um, I'm still having a hard time hearing you. Your voice sounds very weak, and I have my volume on a hundred percent up. This seems to continue to be a problem on a week-to-week basis, so I'm wondering if we could do something to address it, because I feel like I'm completely missing out on a lot of the content of the meeting.
I'll try to make an effort to sit close to the microphones. I'm not sure what else we can do other than, I mean, from a technology standpoint, Bcat kind of operates.
I'm sorry?
We don't operate the machinery, Bcat does. We'll try to speak louder. I, I don't know what else we can do.
Should, excuse me, hi. Um, it, can we test it by like, if I speak right up, or is it, it's, is it that microphone?
Test, test.
Can you hear us now?
Testing, one, two, three, oops.
Ooh, that's much better for us.
Is that better, Steve?
Yeah, night and day, thank you.
Okay.
Great.
It works better when we turn the microphones on, apparently. Was that all you had, Steve?
Yeah, for tonight, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else out there for public participation?
Thank you.
Okay, not seeing anybody. Move on, the agenda item number four, um, informational reports, subcommittee reports. Mrs. Monaco.
I think Catherine and I both have a piece of it, but I'd like to let Beth Colburn go first with the subcommittee report on CPAC.
Sure. Are you, are you there, Beth?
I am, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, for those that don't know me, I'm Beth Colburn. Um, I have a parent of three children in the district, and I'm the membership chair for the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Um, I just thought I'd provide a quick update on some of the things that the CPAC has been working on, um, and then, of course, ask a couple of questions. Um, I first wanted to thank Ms. Bond and Ms. Monaco for attending our business meeting last week. Um, it was nice to have them, um, hear from some of our members about things that are important to them and also, um, feel their support, um, for the special needs community. Um, one of the things that we did recently was we had a booth at Burlington's Truck Day. Uh, we gave away goodies, we had earplugs, um, we did a raffle, and we enjoyed some in-person FaceTime with the community. Um, coming up, we have a virtual meet and greet on October fifth at seven o'clock with our interim Special Education Director Christina Chicalini, the Director of Equity and Inclusion, Raymond Porch, and the District Team Chairs. Um, people can find the WebEx link information for that, um, on our website or our Facebook page, and I believe it did go out to everyone via Aspen as well. Um, I also have two questions. Um, my first question is about the lack of wind block in the middle school. I know before the pandemic, um, when the new middle school schedule was approved, there was going to be a subcommittee to study the schedule's, um, efficiency impact, um, including the adjustment to the loss of the wind block. I know that schedule probably didn't get implemented last year due to COVID, but I'm wondering, is the schedule in effect now without the wind block? Is the subcommittee meeting, um, regularly? Um, and if not, what are the next step and steps in evaluating that new schedule?
Uh, through the chair, Ms. Colburn, I don't know the answers, but I'll get you the answers.
Okay, thank you. Um, and my last question is about busing, so I don't know if you want me to hold it until later in the agenda, um, during the busing section, or if you want me to just ask it now.
Is it particular to?
It's particular to special education.
Sure, then that will come under your subcommittee report.
Okay, um, we recently were notified that some buses were not, um, going out with their monitors. Um, I'm sure that's just a staffing issue that, you know, everyone has been experiencing. Um, but I did reach out to Bob and Christina about, um, just to make sure that they were aware and also find out if parents could be notified, like, that morning, if that was going to happen, so they could make an informed decision about the safest way to get their kids to school. So I was just looking for an update on that.
Bob?
Through the chair.
Through the chair.
Ms. Colburn, yes, we did speak about that, and I'm glad you're following up on it. So I did speak to the bus company as well. Um, your answer is correct, it is a staffing issue. Uh, it's one of the kinks that they are trying to work through. Um, we have put the request in, not only just for monitors, but if any bus is obviously running late, um, they are lacking a little bit in the communication, again, I think due to staffing. Um, so sometimes, parents are getting the same notification when we're getting the notification, um, but we are getting some better communication out of them now. Um, so again, we, uh, you know, as the email said, we'll continue to obviously relay the message as soon as we have the information.
Okay, um, I guess I just want to reiterate, um, what you and I did speak about was that, um, you know, some of these students have a monitor for their own safety, and so to not have that monitor is a safety risk. And I understand, like, the state of the world, but, um, I, I, I feel like we could try to get notification to some of these parents who, um, parents and caregivers who could really benefit from that, understanding that their child is, um, not having that person there to assist keeping their child safe as they get to school. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned about this for some of our students, um, and I, I, it's just ask it, do you continue to keep working on it?
Fully understand. You have my word, they'll continue to work on it.
Thank you. Um, those are the only things, um, I mean, we have other things we're doing, but those are the things I thought I'd highlight tonight. Thank you for letting us, um, participate in the subcommittee report, and thank you, um, in general for just all that you guys do and for your time this evening.
Uh, thanks, Beth. Anybody have any questions or comments, Chris?
Um, I'd just like to follow up on Beth's comments.
Did you want me to bring up the other subject discussed or wait till later?
Yeah, why don't you go?
Okay, so, um, one of the, um, I guess, what they brought up at the, the CPAC meeting that we attended is, um, that they're looking for some sort of guideline on requesting mask exemptions, and I did forward that request on to Dr. Conti, and, um, it really is just a, a guide directing parents to who they should approach with the request, uh, what the timeline would be, um, you know, to get feedback and what, you know, the appeal process is if the request is denied. And I, I can tell you that, um, Dr. Conti right away got, um, right on top of it that evening and has requested some sort of a guideline to be put together. I don't know if you want to comment more on that, Dr. Conti?
Um, well, I spoke to, um, this is Chicalini, and she put some language together and shared it back with the CPAC for their feedback, so I think what I, what I mentioned to the committee, um, okay, I'm sorry, um, what I?
Sorry, I was just wanted to add that, um, um, Mr. Chicalini did reach out to us, um, yesterday and, um, um, I don't know the right words, um, made some edits and asked for our feedback, so that is something we're actively working with her on right now. So, thank you for that.
So, we will get that out as soon as we sort of, uh, incorporate the feedback from CPAC, and then we'll get that out to parents. Um, if you'd like to incorporate that into your policy, then we can bring it before the committee. Um, if we're just using that as procedure, then, then again, we'll just move forward with that procedure, so, um, so that's, we, we did try to follow through.
No, thank you very much, I, I appreciate you working on that so quickly.
Is that it? Chris?
Um, yeah, I just, I have a couple of other notes from the meeting. The first one was about the buses, and, um, I, I would like to add my support for the need. I know nobody can hire anybody to do anything these days, especially, um, bus drivers and, and, and monitors, but the problem is, when you have a child that's nonverbal and that you can't predict their, um, actions, whether they're going to take off their seatbelt or their harness, or they're gonna, you know, all kinds of other things that kids do, it really is a safety issue, so I, I just want to make sure that we have stressed that. And then, um, uh, then there was the parent complaint that the bus company was not returning their calls. And there was also a question about a bullying curriculum, um, and there's a, a new document that CPAC is working on relative to bullying, and Catherine covered the mask exemption, and Beth covered the wind block, so that covers the, uh, subcommittee report. Thank you, Beth.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that report, or anybody have any other reports they want to bring forward? Martha?
Um, I, if no one has any other questions, um, I also, uh, the Burlington Youth and Family Services met, uh, since our last meeting, um, and I'm very pleased at the amount of coordination that's happening. I, our, um, uh, we have a new Director of Mental Health, um, Chrissy Conceition, and, um, she's been working with the Youth and Family Services for years in her former position, and, um, so she and Christine Truhan, the Director of Youth and Family Services, know each other well, so they're continuing their work, uh, with the school district and the, um, Youth and Family Services, uh, agency. For people who don't know, Burlington Youth and Family Services is a mental health agency that is provided by the town of Burlington, um, and it's available for people who need help with any kind of emotional mental health issues in their families. Um, we also had a report from, oh, I didn't write it, Karen, who works at the Police Department as a crisis counselor, and she's doing some amazing work there. We're also, so the Youth and Family Services is also coordinating with the Police Department, um, and it's really good to see that we have these services. There is, um, a waiting list now at Youth and Family Services, although it depends on what time of day people are looking for appointments, um, but it, it's good to see this kind of coordinated, uh, provision of services for people and families in need. So, I just wanted to update people on that. We, uh, we also had a report from, uh, one of our board members who's on CPAC, Becky Norma, so we did hear some of the, uh, ongoing issues, uh, that CPAC's been working on. So, it's nice to see there's a lot of collaboration, um, but there's a lot of work to be done.
Thanks, Martha. Anybody else for reports?
Mr. Chair, just briefly connected to that, as Ms. Simon asked, that, um, Ms. Conceition sort of give the committee an update at a future meeting, so we're going to work on that. We've been sort of introducing people in their, um, new roles, she is one of them, so we can, uh, bring Ms. Conceition again to the committee at a, at a future meeting. Um, we are arranging, um, a time where the Burlington Youth and Family Services and some of the school district leadership can, can get together on an afternoon and just, um, just have a conversation. I think, um, again, Mrs. Conceition, um, Ms. Truhan are, uh, close colleagues, but we have other folks who just need to know each other. Um, we recently did that, I think, last week with the Burlington Police Department. Um, again, while we congratulated, um, Chief Kent on his retirement, um, we wanted to welcome in, uh, Chief Brown, um, I said my third chief, um, here in Burlington, Deputy Chief Kirchner, and then our, uh, school resource officers, Keith Shepherd, who's a detective, and then Vito Costa and Dominic Calicchio. So, uh, introduce them to, uh, some of our new school, um, administrative team, and, um, again, just had a great afternoon, and we really, um, value our, the working relationship that we have with the Burlington Police Department, connected their social worker to, um, our mental health, uh, folks as well, and we're really trying to collaborate because we are seeing a greater need, uh, in the community for, um, for family supports and, and for mental health support. So, um, again, really appreciate the resources Burlington has and the, um, partnerships offered by, uh, town departments, both the police and by Burlington Youth and Family Services.
Thank you. All right, moving on, Ways and Means. Um, is there anybody? I know Steve Moran was here earlier, is anybody from Ways and Means have anything to report?
Uh, Roger, I'm here, but I have nothing to request or report at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, Martha.
This is, this is Steve, same situation, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
A student representative wasn't able to join us this evening, Brooke Hovas, um, I'm sure we'll catch up to Brooke at the next meeting, and she can fill us in on what's going on from her end. Um, item, uh, number five on our agenda is coronavirus update from the superintendent, Dr. Conti.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, I think, uh, Mr. Locke and Patrick is gonna, is gonna help, um, help me with some of this. We, the agenda item reads, uh, Board of Health update, COVID update, and, uh, flu clinic information. Um, we don't really have, um, a Board of Health update in particular, other than, again, to always thank them for their, uh, support, so, um, what we're going to be talking about now is not related to the Board of Health, um, moving forward. So, um, I do want to mention, um, one thing to do with the Board of Health is, um, they have a flu clinic coming up on October sixteenth at the Memorial School between nine-thirty and twelve-thirty. So that is a Board of Health, um, flu clinic. The information is on the Board of Health website as well as our website, and again, that is a flu clinic run by the Board of Health. Later in the agenda, we have other, um, vaccine clinics that we are scheduling, uh, that we will also discuss. So again, I don't want to confuse people, but the flu clinic, again, the Board of Health Flu Clinic is October sixteenth at the Memorial School between nine-thirty and twelve-thirty. Um, now for the COVID update. So we, uh, confirmed with CIC Health. CIC Health is the agency, the business, the contractor that the state of Massachusetts through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is providing the binax now, the rapid testing to school districts, um, to test students. Um, the program that they have is called Test and Stay, and, um, we finally confirmed that, uh, they would have the ability to provide staffing for us starting Monday, October fourth. So we're planning on implementing the state's Test and Stay program on Monday, October fourth. We'll talk about Test and Stay specifically again in, in, in one minute, um, but the other COVID update is, um, we talked about as a committee in August, that when we first implemented our mask requirement for indoors, that we would revisit that decision sort of every month, we're at the end of September now, um, and we would be revisiting that. But remember what happened after we passed the mask requirement locally in Burlington, is the Commissioner of Education then passed a mask requirement indoors for the entire state of Massachusetts that sort of, um, made our mask mandate moot at that point. Um, they said they would go back and look at the, um, re, reevaluate their mask mandate, which they did, um, on Monday, and, uh, the Commissioner has extended the state indoor mask mandate till November first. So, again, what I would say is, um, we, we're following that, um, and we can reconsider, uh, the mask mandate again at the, at the end of October, locally. Again, if the state chooses not to extend, that doesn't mean we don't have to follow that, but as of right now, the month of October will be, um, we'll have a mask requirement indoors. So, um, getting back to the, uh, Test and Stay, um, there are some rules about it, and, um, so I'm, I'm not sure the clearest way to go about this, because we've talked about it so much that sometimes it gets jumbled in my head, but Test and Stay is for students who are identified as close contacts who are asymptomatic. So asymptomatic, close contact students can participate in coming to school the following day. Um, CIC staff will be at the school, they will test the students in the morning, there's a fifteen-minute rapid test, um, with parental consent, and we're going to talk about parental consent, um, more closely. Um, if the test is negative, the students can remain in school, and if the test is positive, then the students need to go home. So, um, I want to bring Patrick in to talk a little bit about parental consent, um, where parents can find the consent, and again, we're working on a letter to send out to all families tomorrow. So Patrick, are you there?
Yes.
You had mentioned to me that the parental consent?
Letter is something that we can.
Is that correct?
Yeah, so, um, CIC, because it's working with all the districts across the state on three different types of testing. One is Test and Stay, and for asymptomatic kids that are close contacts, again, that close contacts in school, not somebody that's a close contact of a positive case outside of school. So asymptomatic testing for, um, close contacts, Test and Stay is one, um, pool testing is a second, and then there's also, um, testing for symptomatic students is a third option. And we've said previously publicly, because people are concerned, and rightfully so, that they're signing a consent form that has three different options on it, we've said clearly we're not doing pool testing, and right now, our commitment as a district is to Test and Stay to try to keep students in school. So, um, we will have, as Dr. Conti mentioned, a link in the letter that we're going to send out in the morning, we wanted to finish the discussion here tonight, but to get ready for next Monday, there will be a link, um, in the letter that we're sending that will allow parents who have not yet sent in consent forms to do that online pretty quickly.
Questions about just the consent itself, and I'm trying to break this up, so, um, so, Mr. Chair, we have a couple of questions. Martha, there?
Um, so just to clarify, you said there are three types of testing, uh, that's on that form, and we are not doing the pool testing. We're doing the Test and Stay for the asymptomatic students who have been identified as close contacts. What about the third one, the third testing that you mentioned? Are we doing?
Symptomatic.
Symptomatic testing?
Um, again, through the chair, um, we weren't, we were not planning, we had mentioned publicly, we were not planning on doing symptomatic testing, um, initially. I think we really wanted to get the Test and Stay program up and running, we wanted to see, uh, how it would be implemented. I think some of our surrounding districts have started, and, um, over the last week or two, some of them have had tests that remained from last spring, um, we weren't in that situation, um, and there are a bunch of factors to it. So my understanding is, um, about eight hundred districts, the state projected about eight hundred districts participating in the Test and Stay, and about twenty-four hundred schools, I'm sorry, uh, signed up, so I think there's been a bit of a catch-up, so we're, we're there, and we just wanted to get the, um, the asymptomatic Test and Stay students in, we thought that should be our priority. And, um, as you can imagine, if we only have one school that requires Test and Stay, um, that would make sense, but if we have multiple schools on the same morning, um, because the Test and Stay has to be done five consecutive days, um, five consecutive days. So, um, it's not just they come out and do a rapid test once, they have to do that, again, five, five days in a row. So, um, that's where we're starting. Um, so we are doing one of the three options, which is Test and Stay at this time.
Um, so I just, through the chair, um, if I had a child with allergies who was sneezing or coughing, um, is there a possibility in the future that they would be able to stay in school, um, and not have to get sent home for that?
Um, I think there's a possibility, I think we have to coordinate some of the details, so we are looking, we're looking into that, so.
So I would encourage, I would like us to continue to, when, when the Test and Stay piece is, I know you can't do everything all at the same time, but when this piece is settled or get, gotten in place and in the groove, I think it would be really helpful to have that kind of testing as well, and, you know, notify parents about whether they're giving consent for that as well. And I don't know if we can have parents give consent for that now, even if we're not doing it yet, so they don't have to fill out another consent form, but you let the parents know in your letter tomorrow what they're signing up for, okay?
Yeah, I think, and again, Ms. Simon, I don't believe we would need another consent form, I just think we would need to inform the parents if we were implementing, what you're talking about is symptomatic testing.
Yep, right.
You know, at the, at the same, um, in addition to the asymptomatic testing.
Okay, thank you.
Christine?
Um, I agree with Martha, I, I sort of assumed that Test and Stay was an all-encompassing term that meant either you're a close contact or you got a headache or something, but the kids wouldn't be sent home from school for, for any symptoms, but that they would be tested in the nurse's office, and if they test negative for COVID, they can go back to class. That, um, I, I have to say that this has been a very unusual timeframe since the last school committee meeting. I don't think in all my time on the committee, I've ever received so many messages from parents, and, um, some of the messages were on this topic. There are people, parents in Burlington who work in other school systems, and those other school systems that were referenced have already been using Test and Stay, and the students have already been covered for things like what I just mentioned. If a child goes to the nurse with a headache, they get a quick COVID test, and if it's negative, they stay in school, which is Test and Stay. So, I'm a little bit blindsided by the fact that that isn't already the plan, and I would like to, um, get some further feedback as soon as you're able to, um, to work it out, so that we not only have, and I didn't realize that people from the company were coming in to do the testing for the Test and Stay. I assumed it would be done, um, in the nurse's office, either by our staff, our staff that we, uh, contracted to come in to help us with it if, if necessary. So I'd like some feedback on that as soon as we can get it, because these kids have been out of school so much in the past two years, that for a child to unnecessarily be sent home because they are allergic to grass, or somebody stirred up some dust, or they have a mild headache, or whatever, um, it, that's just not acceptable to me. I want the kids to stay unless they're sick and they need to go home.
Again, through the chair, Mrs. Monaco, I certainly hear you. I think the distinction between the pool testing, the asymptomatic testing, and the symptomatic testing, those are state distinctions, not local distinctions, so, um, I understand that Test and Stay sort of means the same thing, but there are three distinct, um, plans. I also think some of the timing of implementing this, um, this is a defensive sounding comment, I don't mean it to, but, uh, not all the factors were in our control, so we are, we are implementing, um... So we are, we are implementing, again, on Monday for the test and stay. And we feel like the majority of students who were, who are identified as close contacts and who are asymptomatic, which is the majority of students, will be able to remain, to remain in school. We wanted to focus the, that, again, our test and stay efforts on grades pre-K through seven because, again, reminding the committee that if a student is vaccinated, they are not considered a close contact. So our grade eight through 12 students have that opportunity and that choice. So we would really want to focus the efforts on remaining in school on the students who don't have the choice to be vaccinated and would be identified as close contacts. Some of this, the state would allow, does allow with their guidance, if your child has to take the bus to school in the morning and they are identified as a close contact, your child can ride the bus in the morning and then participate in the test and stay program. They're not contact tracing on school buses. So it's, we can have the students, again, come into school. Part of the, the details of this as well is if your child is participating in test and stay, so they are identified as a close contact, they're, they can participate in school events, but they're outside of school and community events, they're still considered under quarantine. So they would need to follow the Board of Health rules. So that means that, yes, they can take the bus to school, they can get a rapid test, they can stay in school. But they really shouldn't be participating in Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, dance class, other events outside of school. So that may seem, again, counterintuitive. So again, we'll be communicating with parents tomorrow. We'll be sending the link for the consent form if we don't have it already. We'll be uploading all the consent forms into the CIC database. And we'll be, again, working closely with the Board of Health and having the test and stay program for close contacts, for students who are asymptomatic, up and running on Monday. Mrs. Monaco, I hear you about symptomatic students. And I think that'll be, we'll continue to work on that to see if we can get that implemented. But again, right now, we're just talking about the asymptomatic test and stay.
One quick thing, do you have the percentage of students at middle and high that are vaccinated?
I think I sent that to you on Sunday. I'm trying to remember. It was broken out into 12 to 15 and then 16 to 19. It was a week ago. I can find it for you.
I can probably find it too.
I think we're about six, we were 64%, I think 16 to 19, if I'm remembering correctly. And we were below that 12 to 15.
I have two questions. And one is, I, I see a question here. Is the test and stay test a nasal test or spit test, or do we know what kind it is?
Yes, it's a nasal test. I took one yesterday or the day before. And again, it's, it's not a, it's a shallow nasal test, which is the binax test. And again, it's, it, it does take about 15 minutes.
To wait until it's over, not 15 minutes to take the sample?
No, no, no. It's one, two, three, one, two, three. And then you're, you wait for the reagent. So you have to wait 15 minutes.
And my other question is, since we're starting this on Monday, and I don't know, but at our last meeting, we had two classrooms who were out on quarantine. Do we have any classrooms out on quarantine now? And if so, can those quarantined students who are close contacts come to school on Monday and get a rapid, get a rapid test and go to school?
I'm going to say I think so, but we're going to go through that and contact those families directly. We don't have, I think we have students who are quarantined who are out. So again, Patrick, I'm going to look at you to say, I saw the list that you sent me today.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any, I don't believe we have any elementary classrooms out at this time. If something happens between now and the end of the week, we would contact CIC and have them have testers at that particular school in the morning. And I just want to go back one second. I appreciate what Mrs. Monaco said. Certainly, we want to have kids in school. I agree wholeheartedly. Kids have been physically out of school a lot over the last year and a half and nothing we want more. I do just, again, again, like Dr. Conti said, sounding defensive. Been on a lot of calls with district leaders and I have yet to hear somebody say this is going perfect in our district. In fact, I got an email from the CIC, the head of the CIC today, looking to reach out to school districts because they're hearing there's so much, there's so many challenges. They'd like to schedule one-on-one time to talk to us, so we'll set that up before the end of the week. So my point being, Mrs. Monaco, if there's people in town that are in districts where this is going well, we would love to hear from them because I think we're talking to a lot of our local superintendents. So if you can connect us with some of them, that would be a great benefit to us because that's very surprising news to me.
Consider it done.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, there is another question. There, there is still, I, I'm seeing questions on the Facebook Live. And there are still a lot of questions and a lot of confusion. So I'm really glad you're going to send a letter out tomorrow. And I just want to repeat for if that letter doesn't answer people's questions, they can contact us and, and it's, is it covid-something@burlington.org? What's the email that you, they can send questions to?
They can send them directly to me if they want.
Yeah, they can send them to me directly.
Covidconcerns@bpsk12.org gets funneled to my email. They could put larkin@bpsk12.org, either one, I'm going to get the email, so.
All right, then that way they can get the information for their particular situation. Yeah, thank you.
Just mention one more thing, too. One of the things we asked the principals to do today was to try to think about a space in their building where we could potentially do the testing. Because I know, Mrs. Monaco, you're familiar with Fox Hill, and that nurse's office is very small. And it's not realistic to have kids waiting outside or inside that nurse's office, so, for example. So we're looking for a space, space in each school that could handle a number of close contacts from a classroom. So that's, that's another small logistical error, small logistical concern we'll have in place for Monday.
Sounds good.
And then, again, Mr. Chair, all of this gets initiated with parental consent. So we really need to have that parental consent. If we don't have the consent, we can't test the child. The child will then go home unquarantined.
Anybody online, Bob, if he had rest? Chris?
I just want to point out to parents that might be listening, if they have concerns about the test and stay program, that based on what Eric said describing the test, it's not the one that we jokingly call the brain biopsy. It's a, it's a much less invasive test. It's just lower in the nose.
It's true. I would demonstrate on camera if you'd like, but my nose-
I can't wait.
My nose, you could probably park a small car in there. So I, I think it may not be the, the best nose to model, model this with. But we can, we will, it honestly, it, it was not a, a very intrusive experience, so.
Mr. Chair, just as an aside, I do it, I do pool testing in my own school every week. And it is, takes six seconds, very low in the nose, so, good, nothing to sweat.
All right, if there is nothing further on that subject. Dr. Conti, is there anything further under the coronavirus update? Or should I move on to school building facilities?
Again, I think the, the testing is what's taking our, all of our attention right now. I would move on to the facilities, so.
So item 5B, school building facilities update. Mr. Kuna.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the feasibility audit. While I don't have the full feasibility audit, we've had some great conversations with the company. And what we've decided to do is, as I mentioned previously, there was some issues with obviously getting contractors on board, finding time to meet and so forth. Where we're at right now is that they're finishing up three of the four draft reports and expected to have them, I should have those draft reports by the end of the week. And what we're going to do now is focus on those three draft reports while they still continue to work on that fourth draft report. Initially, what we were waiting for, obviously, is to have those findings and then have a full draft report. But I just don't think that that's actually best for, you know, our needs right now. I mean, if they have the information, they're willing to share it. I'm willing to share it with the committee. And then what happens is we'll collect all the data at once at the end, formalize the full draft report and present that. But at least we'll have the findings first of the first three relatively soon.
Excuse me, through the chair, if I may. I don't, I didn't hear you say that that was for the high school, the Burlington High School feasibility audit. Is that correct? That's the reports you're talking about?
So I should confirm that, yes, it is the high school. It is the only feasibility audit that we are currently in contract with, but it is for the Burlington High School.
And I just want to clarify that for people that who are listening. Thank you. Great. Thank you. It's good to hear. It's moving and you're hoping to get some reports this week. That's great. Thank you, Mr. Kuna.
Yeah, next, I'd like to say that, as you can all know from the outside, minus the, the rain, we're moving into that season where we're transitioning away from AC. We're going to have a few weeks where we may not have AC or heat. We're not there yet, but again, we're moving into that season. So one of the things that I definitely want to stress more to our employees and our students is that, you know, we need fresh air into the building. So during this time, where it can either be too hot or too cold in a classroom, some teachers may be inclined to, or staff members may be inclined to shut off Univans, block air vents, things like that. We would encourage you to not do that. Again, we want to have as much fresh air as possible. That also means we want to continue to have windows open as much as possible. I actually am not hearing complaints, which is positive, about the air purifiers. Sometimes they could be a little bit louder than we'd like, but most of the time, they're not that noticeable. So those are seemingly staying on all the time, which is great. But like I said, I just want to stress that Univans and ceiling and floor vents, we just want to make sure to keep them running and not blocked. And then next, I'd like to bring up just building rentals. So at our last meeting, it was decided by this committee that we would now reintroduce a lot of people into our building. As you can imagine, we've had numerous requests. We've been having to on the fly make up some of our own decisions, which, you know, I think would probably be backed by administrators. So not just me sitting in my office, but communications have been happening. We know that the committee wants the focus to be on students, student-based activities. And really, you're wearing your mask and water break, snack break, mask break if needed. But the focus would really be on the activity and, and wearing your mask. So we've been not allowing people who are requesting to have either dinners or serve pizzas, things like that, as the focus of the event. You know, again, the question does come into play, so I would like some guidance or at least some input from the committee, is what are we calling student-based? Because let's say it's an outside event, let's say it's a dance event. And some of our students from Burlington are in it, but also some of the students from other towns are in it. Right now, we are not accepting that. And we're focusing more on 100% Burlington-based student events. And I'm not sure when we are looking to really open that up to outside events. So we're just kind of, you know, walking into the water slowly instead of just diving right into it.
So you'd like some input on that?
Or feedback, please.
Questions, comments? Chris?
I have gotten some people asking what's the difference. And my answer has been that if you're in a cafeteria eating, you're not wearing a mask. And that the concern is not wearing masks. And then the, the pushback has been, well, is anyone monitoring whether or not the other groups are wearing masks? And, and my understanding is that the groups that we talked with at the last meeting have agreed to follow our protocols, which demands masks. And that they have agreed to, you know, be very careful about that and, and monitor it. I understand that there are groups that used to be in the buildings back before COVID and they're, they're in a rush to return. And I don't blame them one bit, you know, like the football team dinners, et cetera. And so my response again was that we were, we are revisiting all of that each month. And I suppose every month that goes by, it takes a big chunk out of the football season. So I'd like to hear what other people think about the, that situation.
Any comments? Bob?
Could I just respond to that? So in that one particular case, myself, the athletic director and the principal of the high school did meet to discuss that. And we reached, reached out to that parent who making the request. Our response was the same one that we all felt was that, one, we're required to provide lunch during the daytime. So that's one thing that we have to do. It is monitored by administrators here. And then because of the group of people that potentially are vaccinated and the timeframe of that lunch period, again, and the requirement of it. Outside of that, if somebody was to rent the building, again, we don't know who's here. Yes, we're asking the person requesting it to be the person who is going to be monitoring that everyone's wearing a mask. But in that particular event, pretty much the whole event revolves around not wearing a mask. So that was something that we felt is that really was outside of our control and really didn't meet the purpose of that. What we interpreted the school committee's mission to be was to start getting, you know, groups back in here for extracurricular activities.
Yeah, I, I think what you're saying makes sense. That events that are focused on eating are not what we're looking to start with at this point. More, this is for activities where children would be wearing masks, except for during perhaps a, a mask break. And where the adults have agreed by agreeing to rent our space that they would follow our mask mandate and, and monitor their children in their program.
I, I think the additional question that he had is if you have, like you said, a dance group that's, say, 60% Burlington students and 40% students from somewhere else, are we going to allow those people to come practice in our space? Or is it mostly performances or, or are those groups here regularly practicing as well? I guess that's kind of a question I had for the scenario you gave.
In that scenario, it would be both. It would be practices and performance.
Right, so I, I, you know, that's, I think his additional question is, you know, is there really a difference if those people are going to follow the protocol as well? Do we allow that or do we only say just Burlington? Or do we take baby steps and do Burlington first and then allow these other people in too? And I think that's kind of the discussion. That's the way I understood your question more than anything at this point. So anyone else want to comment on that? I mean, I'm still thinking about it.
No, I, I agree with Catherine. Baby steps is a good way to put it. Bob's analogy of dipping a toe in slowly, I think makes a lot of sense for these types of, I mean, even my daughter and Chris's granddaughter, they had a recital last year that was with a mask. And so, I mean, it's possible to do these events. So I think it makes sense to go slow, to start with Burlington, to keep it to events or practices and non-food centered events, I guess. That's my opinion.
So I guess the question would be, you know, at what point do we reevaluate and decide that we're going to allow, you know, any, you know, student mix as long as the people are monitoring and adhering to the rules, the strict rules? So are we gonna revisit that in the month or the next meeting? Or, you know, I think we should set some sort of a goal, so it's not just, you know, so people know what to expect. And that way, he's not getting approached every five days by people, too.
I think we already said monthly that we would have it, but of course, this is only two weeks in, and the questions and requests are coming in heavily, so.
Dr. Conti, did you have your hand up? Sort of, halfway. I think some of this depends on how much oversight you want the school district to, to have. So there are some committees for extracurricular activities at the high school level have mandated vaccines in order for students to participate. So if we knew every Burlington participant, high school participant was vaccinated, that may change the committee's decision. The MIAA just came out today. Now, they're not mandating, but they are strongly encouraging, at this point, all winter athletes, because those events move indoors, to be vaccinated. So again, we're not gonna be around to ask the adults or the chaperones or people who are here to show proof of vaccination. And it's really not where we have some oversight of the students. We certainly don't have oversight of the adults or parents. So, so again, I, I think that some of this depends on, you know, where, where you want to go. I, I think, looking at it month to month, it's not about keeping people out of the building. I love having people in the building. I love having the buildings used. But I think some of this goes, you know, goes, goes hand in hand. And I don't think it's, I think we do owe Bob some guidance. And, and it has to seem a little bit more arbitrary, because, more than arbitrary, because that really upsets the people who are attempting to rent. You rented this group and not me, why not me? So again, I, I like maybe distinguishing the food at first, but I would always like there to be a message that, that things can get, restrictions can be loosened as we have more and more people vaccinated. And I think, I think the two kind of go hand in hand, and I don't, I don't want to lose that in the messaging.
So my question then would be, is there, I know within my organization where I work, there was a voluntary vaccination disclosure form. And, you know, if we are, you know, you have people signing, you know, forms for the test and stay, maybe there's a voluntary vaccination disclosure form that we can use for both adults and students. I mean, if the adults really want to support their students in participating, then I would think that they would want to disclose that as well, if that helps us, you know, make a decision. I think that might be something we can investigate.
Chris?
Yeah, for the people that have talked to me about this, I wonder if they would be willing to make sure that the, the students and the parents involved are vaccinated. And if they are, I personally don't have a problem with them having a dinner in the cafeteria as long as they assure that everyone there is vaccinated. I mean, that's certainly an option.
Martha?
I'm wondering, this is a level of detail that you need feedback on. But I'm wondering if the committee would be interested in passing on this kind of, this detail level of decision-making to Dr. Conti, with Dr. Conti checking in with us when he feels like there may be a need for a further public discussion. I, I feel like he's heard, I think we've expressed our concerns and where we feel things need to go step by step. And if you're interested, Dr. Conti, in perhaps having it be not so determined by us having this conversation every month. But maybe you could, as things come up and as the numbers change and as more students become, you know, the older students become vaccinated and such, would you prefer to just be able to work that out with Bob and other administrators? Or would you rather have us have this conversation every month?
Again, I, I can work it out. You guys are getting the calls. I don't want to be the, the, for non-students, I, I don't necessarily want to be asking people, are you vaccinated? Again, they're adults. That's not their business. It only concerns me because we have students in my care who are not vaccinated. That's the only reason. So certainly, opening the buildings up at night when students aren't here makes sense. I just think if you want to fully open, then I just think the conversation has to be one that incentivizes vaccination. So, so Ms. Simon, to answer your question, I don't mind making those decisions. My thinking is, is just that. And I, I don't want Burlington staff to be asking, you know, are you vaccinated? You can't come in, you can come in. And I know this is also connected to some parents who want access to the buildings during the day and love having parents participate in school. Part of our reasoning is there are children, again, certainly at the younger grades, who are not vaccinated. You know, do we start asking people for their vaccination status? That just puts us in a very different role, and it's just easier for us, at least for the early time. And we really didn't know what to expect in September. So I think sometimes people look back and say, boy, we should have been in the buildings the whole time. And we honestly just didn't know what we would see. We're still not out of this particular surge, or whatever you want to call it. Cases are down in Middlesex County, and I think that's a positive. But I don't necessarily want to lift everything right now, given the percentage, percentages of 16- to 19-year-olds, which I do think, who are vaccinated, because I do think that can be higher. So you can certainly leave to us. I think, Bob, we're prioritizing, from what I'm hearing, Burlington events based on students, non-eating events, I think currently, right now. And, and we want to encourage, as we move into the colder months, encourage people, certainly high school students, participating in all these activities that are gonna be indoors to get vaccinated, to work with their pediatricians, to get their advice. And then I hope we can meet most of the demand that we, that we have moving forward.
Chris?
In response to Martha, I, I really do like to let Eric make the decisions and recommend things to us because that's the way it's supposed to be. But I do think we need to talk about it because parents are really focused on these things and they want to hear what these decisions are and why they're being made and how the committee members feel about them. Relative to the groups, as I said, I don't, I agree with Eric that we should not have school department employees checking vaccination cards. If there is some way that a group who wants to use the facility can, can, you know, guarantee us somehow or that everyone involved is, will, is vaccinated, I would consider easing, easing for that, but not if Burlington is involved in checking vaccination cards, certainly. So, you know, another thing that, that I have on my list of, of issues here tonight, which is completely related, is parents are not happy about online back-to-school nights. They want to come into the building. And, you know, it's all the same problem. And it, to me, it ties into the mask mandate that was renewed by the state. If we have 80% vaccination rate, we can lift the mask mandate according to the new rules, correct?
Possibly, yes. That's, that was a number that was thrown out, yes.
Okay. Well, we don't have 80% of the students at the high school vaccinated or at the middle school. And, you know, that should be a goal for everyone who wants to get these buildings reopened, is to get the vaccination rate higher within the community, the students, parents, everyone.
All right. Just to add my two cents, the, the group that came before us last time was primarily the Burlington Youth Basketball Association. And then somebody also spoke on behalf of the Pop Warner Organization. I've fully supported allowing them in. The, the strong majority of those students are 12 or under, or under 12. So vaccination is not an option for them. So I thought, my opinion was, and it seemed like everybody agreed, that it, it was to their benefit to allow them to, to get those organizations up and running. It, it was important for the kids, and so that's fine. We certainly didn't discuss at all groups from out of town, older groups, different groups, you know. And I, I understand that those, those groups are all out there, and I'm sure they're, they're calling. But I certainly have no problem with leaving the, the monitoring it to the, to the administration. But I think the guideline should be that Burlington, groups for Burlington students, and that's kind of where our, I, I'm not sure the administration was all that thrilled that we opened the, the school, the buildings a couple of weeks ago. So, so I think, you know, the word small steps has been used several times. I think that's probably the way to go at this point. Keep it within the parameters of what we discussed last time. Use your best judgment for that. Things change weekly, monthly, whatever, then everything changes. So it's an ongoing process, but at least, you know, if a men's basketball league calls, you can at least say, look, they're talking strictly about students right now, or whatever. There's gonna be hybrids in there that are gonna make, make your life a little bit difficult. But if we focus on Burlington groups, particularly the younger kids, that's kind of what we, that was what we talked about a couple of weeks ago.
Martha?
And I, in terms of Mr. Kuna's report, I actually had a question about the last item he had talked about before he talked about the building rentals. You're talking about this time of year where we're transitioning from using AC to the heating but needing to have windows open. And a year ago, we were in a very different position. We were doing maintenance on all of the univans and that kind of thing. And I just wondered if you could give us a very brief, I assume there's not as much work to be done this year. But a brief, I, I also assume that we are checking all of them because we're at the beginning of a new heating season. And if you could just give us a brief update, am I right that there's not as much work to be done?
Sure. I do believe in our August meeting that I did address this, but I'm glad to bring this back because it's, it's great to have this out in the public. So, yes, prior to school opening, our maintenance staff, along with our contracted HVAC technicians, went through all the buildings as we do every single year. We did do CFM, which is cubic feet per minute readings on each one of our machines to make sure that they're blowing the specified, and they should be, that we also replaced all the filters in our rooftop units and in our units that are with inside the classrooms, our unit vents. That also gives us a time when we're inside to do any cleaning, any maintenance. Anything that's underperforming has been repaired. Yes, there was a lot less, not because last year we did maintenance. It just really depends on the way the systems are running and the luck of the year, I guess. But we do have reports of all of that. I am continuing to meet with our consultant friends, residents, Mike Walters and Ed Parsons. We are also continuing CO2 testing within the buildings, so we are doing those reports as well. And like I said, I'm meeting with Ed and Mike, so thank you to both of them. But we're continuing the work as promised that we did last year during COVID. But we still want to stress the emphasis that, you know, bringing fresh air into the building as much as possible is gonna be helpful. And then, like I said, at this time of year, when it is some days hot in the morning or vice versa, cold in the morning and hot in the afternoon, it's really difficult to kind of maintain temperatures because our systems are really designed to either be heat or AC. Memorial really is our only building that can kind of do both on the fly. So that being said, like, you know, a little participation help from our staff just to try to make sure those windows are open, those univans are on, and we're not blocking those vents.
Thank you for that update.
Okay, Bob, anything else under facilities? Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is the Fox Hill School Building Committee meeting update.
Yeah, I hope this one will be quick. We did have our first meeting last week on Wednesday, on the 22nd. It was a hybrid meeting, so both in-person here, also on WebEx. We had 16 of our 20 members attend, which was great. You know, it was kind of not short notice on it, but I mean, we gave, you know, less than two weeks, and we only had four conflicts. We had some good conversations. We did an overview of the project, of where we're at. The timelines were distributed so people know, you know, what, what targets we need to hit. And for people at home listening, definitely, one target that we're really concerned with is February of 2022. That is when the MSBA Board votes on our project. So what we're in right now is the eligibility phase. And if we are voted upon at the MSBA Board meeting in February, then we would move to our second phase, and that's where we would really seek the committee's help in moving into the feasibility part of it. That's when we would look for an OPM. You know, months, months later, we would start looking into designs of the project well before we even consider digging into the ground. But, you know, February is really our next target, and like I said, thank you for everyone who attended. And we are anticipating a December meeting. I have not set a particular date, even though we did throw out two dates at the, at our meeting on the 22nd. So I'm gonna schedule that pretty soon, so you all should be expecting an invitation. There may have been some members that didn't receive invitations. You know, I'm gonna follow up and make sure everyone does get those invitations. But like I said, 16 members did attend, and the four who didn't, I had spoke with, and they had conflict. So, like I said, thank you for all that attended.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions from anybody on the Building Committee meeting? Seeing none, move on to item 6A, transportation, update on buses and routes.
Mr. Chair, Bob again.
It's just me, the hot seat.
You get all the easy things, huh, Bob?
Yes. So the good news with transportation is, is that it's the same as it was last week. The bad news, of course, is that it's the same as last week. I'm not making a joke of that. We have had great conversations with the bus company. One of the changes that we are implementing is that, as I had mentioned previously, they were pulling any staff that they could, spare bus drivers, drivers from other towns, and office personnel to go out and drive our buses if needed. One of the commitments they're making is that they're gonna leave one person at a minimum in the office. So the stress that that puts on is, is that, of course, if they're short a bus driver, now they need to find that driver from somewhere else. The reason we came up with that commitment is, again, the communication side of it. While it's still stressful, if a bus is late or can't make it to a stop, it's a lot less, I mean, it's a lot less stressful if people know that. So again, the earlier comment on communication, we're trying to build that. And again, with one person in the office, sometimes things definitely happen quickly that either a bus is running a few minutes late, and it's tough to make that communication and get that out to parents quickly. Sometimes people don't show up, so the runs don't happen. And then the bus company is scrambling on the phone to get other buses to make up for that. We did an update as well on BCAT this week, on our weekly update, myself and Dr. Conti, to let everyone know that, again, this is something that we're committed to, or something that we're working on. The bus company is committed as well. In regards to Governor Baker's announcement about National Guards, that is in play, and communities are starting to see those members. But again, Burlington is further down on that list, so we're still approximately two to three weeks out. We don't have a confirmed date as to when we will see it. And again, we personally are not getting the National Guards. The bus company would be getting that and be able to distribute them to those routes. So our hope is, is that in the next couple of weeks, we'll see National Guard employees. Our continued hope daily is that more people will continue to have driver's licenses for our buses and sign up to be an employee at one of the many local bus companies that are in need of drivers. Office personnel staying in the building is gonna be a help for us to be able to get communication out a little bit better. But again, we will not be able to get every message out. And we are continuing to update routes and still receiving requests. So, of course, many people have emailed and called, and we haven't been as quick as in past years getting changes done. But we still are making changes, just at a slower pace. We will continue to work on this as much as we can, and we're putting a lot of effort into getting the buses running daily and correct and messages out when we can.
Thank you, Bob. Questions or comments for Mr. Kuna? Chris?
Chris?
I had some parents contact me about a Panglan bus that was late, and then it didn't show up, and then it was late, and then it didn't show up, and do you have any update on that particular bus run?
I think that was bus three, I think. So that bus had an issue in the morning with the driver. The schools were notified again, but late, and at that point, it's tough to react because usually if, let's say the bus is already ten to fifteen minutes late, a majority of parents drive their children, so then if the bus comes back and does any circle to pick up students, I don't want to say it's a lost cause because some of them did take the bus again. It was the same impact in the afternoon, we didn't have a bus, so buses had to circle back. The communication did go out, but late to the school, and then again, trying to get that message out to parents late is, is difficult. We thought that we had a plan, we tried to communicate it during the daytime to the staff, the plan didn't work correctly, and we did not get the full ridership that we wanted on the bus on that particular day.
Is there a driver now?
There is a driver now, yes.
Is the problem with hiring drivers easing up at all?
Not that I'm aware of, we're not seeing it.
And this is sort of an off-the-wall question that just occurred to me, but is it, is it common with all the bus companies currently that they can't get drivers? It isn't one particular or two particular, it's, it's bus companies in general are not able to get drivers?
So not only is this nationwide, but definitely in our state, it's, it's a large, large problem. I've been in communication with other communities, specifically Labhair uses a collaborative program where they go out to bid and get multiple bus companies to work on their projects. They're seeing it with multiple bus companies, I've been in communication with other bus companies. One thing that we need to be clear about is that we have a bus contract for eighteen general ed buses, and then we have two mini buses that are thirty-five passenger, that are wheelchair capable. Within our contract as well, too, we are able to use them for field trips and/or athletics. Any specialized transportation or anything IEP related doesn't typically fall within that contract and falls under specialized transportation. So again, there's, there's differences in where we're getting the vendors from, and we use multiple vendors, not just for our typical, you know, eighteen buses, we use different vendors for specialized transportation as well, too. So again, we're, we're seeing this in multiple facets.
I understand in Woburn, they have the same bus company for their special ed transportation, and they currently have quite a few National Guard members doing that transportation, and I guess it's, it's sort of a shock all around, you know, young, young National Guard guys that had not been, and women who had not been bus drivers are, are having a fun time.
Yep, and that onboarding process is one thing, just to get the licensing, take the testing, do the driving test, but then knowing the community, learning the routes, so even when we have a sub-driver, that's one of the problems that we run into as well. So you all are familiar with GPS, and it's going to say, take this left, take this left, but when you know the community, you may think, if I take this right and this left, I'm going to get there quicker.
Right.
Right? So knowing that local community is definitely something that, you know, helps to speed up those routes, but it's also impacting us right now when we do have subs or substitute drivers.
Carol?
Thank you. I'm not trying to open a can of worms, and I guess I'll defer to the experience on the committee. Have there ever, in the past, been conversations about owning our own buses? A few months back, we were sent some information about electric buses and a variety of grants that are available, and I'm not sure about the capacity of the district to park them and maintain them, and I know there's a whole long list of things that go along with owning your own transportation, and I know that we're also under contract for three more years, so it's moot for a while anyway, but I was just curious, I was thinking about it the other day, and curious what...
It's come up informally before, just in passing, nobody's really done a deep dive into it other than, you know, it obviously costs a lot of money upfront, and then there's a whole, you know, these people become town employees, and so there's a whole financial component to it that I don't think anybody's, at least in, in my memory, has gone that deeply into, other than just the general understanding that it'll be expensive and...
Just in comparison to with the contract that we currently have, which will most likely only go up in...
Yeah, no, it's, 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 it's an interesting idea, and like I said, it has come up on occasion, but never, you know, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we've gone beyond talking about it in passing.
Well, the most recent time it came up was at Ways and Means, Mr. Gallagher brought it up, and it was a couple of years ago when we were having the argument about which bus company and all that, and as Tom said, it would be an expensive upfront thing to do, but in addition to that, there's no place in Burlington to park buses and, and have a, so it was, it was Mr. Gallagher, and no one else agreed with him, so that's all I know from my experience.
And we would still have to find bus drivers.
Right.
That was going to be my comment, so. The drivers, the yearly maintenance, the insurance is one of the downfalls besides the outlay of the buses, and then, of course, you know, let's say five to seven years from now, we're trying to get on some type of replacement plan, you know, because you really want to replace some of those buses every year, every two years, as opposed to, you know, buying twenty buses today, and then five years from now, ten years from now, buying twenty buses again. So, I mean, we, we have informally looked into it, you know, I think myself and Martha have dived deeper into electric buses. I've attended some meetings that, you know, either MSBA or that state has put out in regards to that, but no, anything deeper than actually presenting a proposal to purchase buses, no.
Dr. Conti?
Again, Mr. Fosse, you mentioned we have three years. I honestly think if we were going to go in that direction, three years is, is not a long period of time, so if it's going to be something that we want to explore, we would look at it. My prior district, we owned our buses, it was a little bit different, it was three hundred and eighty square miles, not eleven square miles, and they had a bus garage, there was a staff of maintenance folks, and we still struggled to find drivers. So just to be concrete, we have eighteen buses Bob mentioned, and how many drivers do we have currently sort of full-time?
Fourteen out of last count, I believe it's fifteen.
So we're starting short, and we're making that up, so until we have eighteen steady drivers and some steady substitutes, we're going to see new drivers, we're going to see stops missed, we're going to see some delays, so we are certainly trying. Bob is doing a great job, so please, it's not lack of effort, it is, we are in constant contact with the bus company, and I think some of the communication issues was the bus company, again, was erring on the side of clearing out the offices and having everyone drive. Parents were calling, and there was no one to pick up their call, and that was just increasing frustration, so we are trying to make this work. There's not enough competition. If there's an MASC or a larger conversation, some of you will be attending the state conference in November, it may be something that you want to look at. I think the state is looking at the lack of competition across communities with, with bus companies, so that is part of the challenge, Mr. Fosse, and it would be nice to have some competing companies, just so service and price can, can come into play.
Martha?
Martha, if I may, can I just refocus, re, re-let everybody know to speak closer into the mic? I'm getting some texts saying that some people are difficult to hear and others are. Thank you.
I want to say a little bit what Dr. Conti just said, that I, I do think, you know, thank you, Mr. Kuna, for trying to manage this and doing what you can and trying to think of creative solutions or, or some issues like having somebody in the office, so at least parents can call and there's someone to answer it. And I also want to acknowledge that for a parent whose kid isn't been picked up and they don't know what's happening, and it's, it's not a good situation, it's a horrible situation. I don't see that there's a solution, and I don't, I, I hope that parents in their frustration can understand that there isn't a solution that we can think, we can find right now. I wish there was, but there doesn't seem to be, and if people, you know, it's, it's just a difficult situation, and I'm sorry that the kids are in it, I'm sorry that the families are in it, and it certainly, you know, gives you extra work to do, I know you're doing it, but it's a bad situation all around, so thank you, everyone, for hanging in there.
And again, I, I just wanted to comment, I mean, the work is expected of me every year, so it's not that I'm doing above and beyond, I think what it is, is that I'm actually lacking in my response to parents as well, too. I mean, I think what I feel every day is, is that a lot of my emails are from parents or even phone calls are from parents, that whether or not I may agree with their request for changes or whatnot, it's just that we can't necessarily give them the answers, and I think that's frustrating for parents as well, too. Another thing that I wanted to point out is that even keeping one person in the staff in the building still does not mean that one person can answer ten phone calls, so if a bus is running five minutes late, three minutes late, I can clearly understand the frustration that parents are feeling, but if ten parents pick up the phone and call the bus company, they're still getting that same response, or they're still feeling frustrated day to day, even though one person may be there. So again, I'm asking for a little bit of patience, I know you've already been impatient, and you know, this is week five. We will get there, but please understand the circumstances surrounding why we're here now, so we'll get there.
Thank you, Bob. Item 6B, Vaccine Clinic Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, in addition to the Burlington Board of Health Flu Vaccine, which we already discussed, that is happening on October sixteenth, we are hosting at our schools some COVID vaccine and flu vaccine clinics, and those are all listed on our websites, I don't need to read the list now, but the, again, the COVID vaccine, including boosters, those dates and times are available, again, those are free. They are running in three-week intervals because they are distributing the Pfizer vaccine, so anyone in the community who would like to participate can go to our website and participate in our vaccination clinics, so I just wanted to highlight that. Mr. Chair?
One question on that that I, just kind of occurred to me on, when you said the boosters, the boosters, the booster shots are recommended for a certain segment of people. Whoever's handling the, the vaccines for us, are they using that, whatever guideline, I think it's over sixty-five, plus if you have some health issues?
I think, Mr. Murphy, someone of your age could jump right to the front of the line.
Well, that's not the only reason I was asking. No, but I'm, I'm just curious, are they, are they, is, is somebody actually checking ages, are they, are they, if you show up and you want a, you, you want a booster, and you claim that you're in one of the categories, is, is that being policed, is that, how's that being handled?
I believe you would have to take the proof of vaccinations that you've already received, because they would want to make sure that you're receiving a Pfizer booster, not a Moderna, if you're a Moderna person. I think on your Pfizer card, it would show your age, and it would show when you received your initial shots, and then whether you qualified given the current parameters from the CDC for your, for your booster.
So there is somebody that's screening that or whatever?
Yes, and again, because that's the only sort of fully approved vaccine, those are the vaccines that are being distributed.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll have full approval of the Moderna, I'm a Moderna recipient, so I wouldn't receive a COVID booster, I don't think, unless that changes.
Okay. Any other questions, Martha?
Two, quickly, the vaccine clinics are being held in the Burlington High School Cafeteria, is that correct?
Yes, it is. If I failed to mention that, it is Burlington High School Cafeteria, and again, they are running from six to eight PM, or six-thirty to eight-thirty PM, again, they're on our website.
Yep.
We're running them during the evening.
And my other question is, who's eligible? Is it any Burlington resident, or is it a parent, a student, a teacher? So could you clarify who's eligible for these vaccination clinics?
Vaccine clinics are available for student staff and the Burlington community.
Okay, thank you.
So you would click on the date, you'd sign up for an appointment, and again, when you sign up, they would, they would tell you what information that you need to bring with you in order to qualify.
Okay, so it's not just parents and students, it's the community of Burlington, people are eligible for this vaccination clinic, which is being offered every three weeks, starting next Monday night, and they're free.
Yeah, we started September thirteenth, the next one is October fourth, then October twenty-fifth, so again, on our website, again, if, if you want a vaccine, we are, there's opportunities to get the vaccine.
Thank you.
Here.
Okay, seeing nothing further, we'll move on to the next item, which is the RFP for the Equity Audit. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very excited about this agenda item because it's been something that's been in the works for a couple of years. I know the committee has seen the term equity audit in our District Improvement Plan for a while. I want to thank Ray Porch, who's on the call tonight, and he's going to be speaking to this and answering questions in a minute, but I did want to thank him for sort of moving this audit forward. I also know he's been working a lot with Nicole Kasha, because this is a, this is going to be a public request for proposal, and we're going to have bids submitted. I think we shared the RFP with the committee. One thing I just want to stress is, an equity audit is not only about race, it's about all kids, and it's looking at all sort of actions of the, of the district, and I think, like any audit, there'll be some things that we do well, and there'll be some things that we can improve on, and I think having that information, having those facts, will allow us to make better decisions moving forward, because as you all know from this role, there are lots of opinions, and while we appreciate opinions and we need to respond to those opinions, having a set of facts that we share and that we acknowledge, and then moving forward, either making adjustments or not making adjustments, at least you're feeling you're doing that in the context of sort of knowing, knowing what is. So again, with that, I want to, again, reintroduce the committee to Ray Porch. Ray, thank you for joining us this evening, and again, thank you for all the work that you've put into getting this request for proposal prepared and ready to be put out into the, into the marketplace for, for some consultants to, to, to work with us on. So do you want to highlight some of the things that you're, you're sort of, you're focused on and you're looking at that drove some of what you put into the request for proposal?
Sure. I, I think Dr. Conti captured the essence of what an equity audit is, and I understand that this district, prior to my arrival, spent some time, one of the things we tried to do is narrow our focus and make this process really anchored, anchored to the district's improvement plan, as well as some elements of Dr. Conti's goals that he submitted to you, you good folks. Essentially, I, I guess I would just point to a couple of things, as Dr. Conti spoke to, we're looking to account for and assess and understand outcomes through, you know, achievement for all students, and as he said, that's across the gamut of who are our students in Burlington Public Schools, and no one group of students is more important than any other group of students, as they all depend on having a well-rounded, inclusive educational experience for which they can show up authentically themselves and have the best opportunity to achieve at their best potential. I think the, the districts and this, this community's equity statement is, is kind of a baseline for, for this audit as well, but as I said, there, there are six pretty much primary areas. One is, you know, academic achievement. I think the other one, what we're looking at through some of the guided questions in this audit, once we get it going, is equitable access and inclusion, and again, across all learners, neurodiverse, you know, particular pockets and demographics of students. of students. So, the third element I think we will focus on is equitable treatment. So, as we think about like welcoming and warming, and inclusive learning environments, so schools, classrooms, district offices, you know, these are kind of low-level examples. The fourth element we will, will really be paying close attention to is equitable opportunity to learn. So, in academic set, you know, settings, making sure that we have high standards that offer strong systems of support, again, for all students. The fifth element will be equitable resources. And that includes looking at allocation, funding, staffing, facilities, instructional materials, and equipment, and how these, these resources are allocated. The last element that will be kind of highlighted is accountability. That assures that all stakeholders hold themselves and each other responsible for success of every student in this district. And we'll do that through looking at, you know, data and process, as well as policy, which you folks are obviously very, very much anchored to. So, these are just six areas that probably highlight this process overall. And what we'll do, this is a nine-month process, the way it's written in the proposal, and we'll be trying to update as we go along here. One of the things I'm going to be trying to do is synthesize some of my plan coming into this district in real time, as we hit like maybe the quarter, the quarter point or the midway point. And what that'll include is an update on what the findings are in kind of, you know, getting feedback from stakeholders in our district. You know, maybe pulling together some subcommittee folks to look at some of these areas in more depth and help create some more guided questions, and think through some logical, logical kind of action steps. And then obviously, the conclusion, there'll be a report as well, and we'll try to move forward based on those findings. So that's kind of a low-level framework for what this process will be as it unfolds. And I'm happy to field any additional questions that you might have at this point.
Thanks, Ray. Anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Porch, or the subject in general? Martha?
You know, I looked over, I'm really delighted that we're finally going to, here, I'll speak a little closer to the mic, does that help? I'm really glad we're going to be doing this equity audit. We have been talking about it for a few years. We put it off a little when we heard we were going to be able to have a director who would be able to manage and focus us in this work. So I'm really delighted that you're here to do this. I'm glad, looking through it, that we're going to have input from all the stakeholders and people coming in from the outside to really dig into our evidence and our data, and I want to thank you for that. I know you're going to be very involved with it, even though you're not the consultants, per se. And I just want to encourage you and the staff to continue to do all of the, for lack of a better word, we, action items. I mean, a couple of years ago, the, even without a director, we have an equity committee of staff that have come up with a lot of really important action items that we know we need to be working on and looking at. And I know that many of those areas have been started. We have support for students, we have support for teachers. We're looking at incident report, response protocols and things like that, and that, when I, I was so excited to get this request for proposals, and then I saw it was going to be nine months, and it was like, of course, it's going to take nine months to do this. But in the meantime, we need to keep working on these issues, and then this equity audit will help us move forward as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Anybody else with any questions or comments?
Just want to say good luck. Hope it goes smoothly.
Thanks, Ray. Thanks for coming up tonight, and...
Well, he's, we're not done with Mr. Porch yet, so he has, he has one more agenda item, Mr. Chair, which is, we're also very excited about. And I wanted to give, again, Ray, you a chance to talk about the DEI Community Conversations. I believe your first is going to be October 20th, and this might be a good venue for you to start that communication. I know we have other, other means for you to, to get the message out. But, and again, we're, we're excited to support the community conversation. So why don't you inform the committee a little bit about what's happening, and why, and if they want to be involved, how they can be involved?
Sure, sure. I want to go back a little bit to Ms. Simons' comments. Thank you. And I think to the end of what you were referring to about continued action items, there has been a lot of really good work that happened, and I've shared that multiple times and multiple spaces upon my arrival. And I appreciate the efforts that have been put forth. And since July 1, I've spent a lot of time with, with our teams and our school leaders, and talking with many of our parents via email and phone calls. It's been terrific. But really kind of getting a better understanding of some of the things that folks have felt that have gone well, and some of the things that we could do a little bit better, or do in a more coherent kind of way. And you'll hear me refer to that word a lot. So to that end, we will be rolling out a monthly session. It's a very inclusive, you know, opportunity for all of our stakeholders, parents, caregivers, district committed, community partners. I'd love to see all five of you show up for this as well, if you have the time. And it's called Let's Talk About It, with the Director of DEI, that would be me, as the facilitator. And the idea here is pretty simplistic, but also super important. I think that whenever you have conditions that are changing, and we're, we're all witnessing this nationally, and I've gotten the whispers and the comments around, you know, the different concerns and dynamics that lots of our districts are having, as I've got friends across this country that do this work as well. What I want us to be able to do, and I think our leadership team is in agreement on this, as well as our school leaders, is really stand in front and create opportunities for us to come together and build bridges through dialogue. I think when you do that, what you do are a couple of things. One, you create space where folks can come and have their questions answered, not necessarily by me, but conversations can be had where folks can seek understanding together. And I think that that's important, that you're intentional, and you deliberate when you create those spaces. This, Let's Talk About It, is an opportunity for us to do just that. You know, there will be lots of resources at these sessions. They'll be once a month. The first one is October 20th, and we're shooting at 7:00 to go to about 8:30. We want to stay inside of about 90 minutes with these sessions. We will also have, you know, we've got support from the Boston Educ, the Burlington Education Fund Foundation. So they're, they're actually supporting this event on the rollout on the 20th, and we're hopeful to keep them as a partner moving forward. Who knows, at some point, maybe we'll be able to get together, because I'm a hopeful person. I'm hopeful that down the road, we'll be able to do this in person. But we'll be rolling this out in a virtual way. We will have resources, reading pieces. I will guide the framework for this, this process, which, as I said, will be collaborative. So you can expect to see Jennifer Knight present to share updates and information around family engagement for our district. You can expect to see Christina Chicalini, she'll be present as well, sharing updates. I did have a wonderful opportunity to sit down with Beth and, you know, other colleagues from CPAC, and I've invited and welcomed them as well, as we think about, you know, just as a district presenting a united front as we tackle complicated and complex issues, as well as model for other districts. What it is, what it is to do this work in a way that is collaborative, but problem-solve-oriented, in a respectful and kind of understanding way. And I think more minds together, more we, less me, is, is an approach that has been successful in my experience. So that, those are some of the reasons and purpose behind this work that we'll do. We'll seek feedback after every session. We'll seek ideas and creative suggestions from folks as we move forward. And we'll try to, in real time, synthesize those into, as Martha Simon said, some of our more immediate action plans. So that's the essence of Let's Talk About It. And as I said, I am very hopeful to see, you know, all five of you present, and willing to show up and support, and more importantly, model the participation that's warranted for us to, to build bridges as we move forward through some, some changing times as a school district, to create the best opportunities for our families and our young people.
Is that a remote meeting on the? On the 20th, raised, is it going to be online? The meeting?
Yes. So there is, there is a flyer. I'm going to, I'm going to rely on Rosemary, I know she's on the call, but we're going to be getting that out. We did, you know, announce this on BCAT. We're going to be getting that out via Aspen. We're going to be posting it on the website, on, you know, on the Burlington School District website. That's another project that we continue to kind of update and get information onto that site. Lauren's been great. And so we'll, we'll be utilizing that more as well, and school leaders will be getting it out as well. So we'll try and make sure that we hit all the channels that we need to hit. We'll get it translated. You know, we'll have Carrie Lamprey will be present with our EL community. And so we're, we're going to, you know, do all those things to communicate it out as well, so.
Good. Thank you. Questions or comments?
Again, I just want to reinforce what Ray said. Certainly welcome his expertise, and I think that change is hard, but communication is necessary. And I think that we, we heard something today that stuck with me. I think what was said was something, Ray, that the, the pace of change is highly correlated to the pace of trust. And I think, you know, please forgive my, maybe my inserting myself in this, but it seems like a lot of these community conversations are, one of the outcomes would hopefully be an increase in trust, and that would, that would help promote the change. So again, thank you for, for coordinating this and for providing this opportunity. I think it's important. A lot of people have, make assumptions in their head, and I think giving them an opportunity to test those assumptions, have conversations, work through some of the questions that they have, again, will just help establish trust moving forward. So, thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would also say this, Dr. Conti. I think one of the things I'm hopeful for is that because we create the space intentionally, that what it does is that it calms the waters around change. Oftentimes, when folks experience change, in my experience, what happens is, and I haven't been in the world as long as some of our senior members of the school committee, so with all due respect...
That's Mr. Murphy, yeah.
I would just, I would just say this, that oftentimes, fear is a byproduct of what we don't know. And, and sometimes that shows up in our willingness, our unwillingness to ask critical questions because we, you know, we want to, no one wants to be caught emperor with no clothes on. But I think if we create an environment intentionally where we welcome that, that folks are more comfortable doing that. And to Dr. Conti's point, we can build trust, and we can tackle these things together, and then we don't have to have so much division and folks anchoring down on their own agendas. Like ultimately, our school district is about creating conditions for our young people, and families are a conduit to do that. And so that is absolutely one of the hopes in this work, that we can build, you know, lots of trust and lots of strong relationships, and be able to differ and seek understanding, and, and understand the distinct difference between agreement and understanding. They don't always have to go together. And that we will, none of us will need an AED or a resuscitator, where we will continue to breathe and, and move forward. So, yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Ray. Is that, anything else under that item, Dr. Conti?
Again, not right now, again, just gratitude. Thanks, Ray.
Thanks. See you in a couple of weeks, Ray. Mr. Monaco, you said you had a couple of things you wanted to bring up before we adjourned?
Yes, I do. So I'll do them in order of, well, never mind. So the first thing I want to bring up is, I understand, and I'm sure a lot of parents will understand what I'm saying quickly, there was a TikTok challenge about destroying bathrooms. And I understand that we've had some vandalism in our bathrooms. And that is appalling, and I would like to ask, I now know there is a new TikTok challenge, which is very different, and I won't go into it, but I would like to ask parents to, to try to be aware of these things and encourage their children not to take part in these challenges. However, back to the bathrooms, there are a small number of students who, at the middle school and high school, I don't know about the elementaries, were involved in various forms of vandalism that were very unpleasant. And as a result, there have been some restrictions placed on the bathroom use, which has turned out to be a problem of its own, and which has been very unseemly for some of the students, and especially the students that had absolutely nothing to do with it, have been paying a price that is just not a price we should ask children to pay. So I'd like to ask Eric what's going on as far as taking care of this.
Mrs. Monaco, I think we became aware of it yesterday. I think we, I became aware of it yesterday. We had conversations today. I think there, there were much higher levels of supervision and much more bathrooms, many more bathrooms available today. And I think if there are some individual concerns, that parents should connect with the, the school. So I do think we are not trying to punish everyone for the actions of a few. I do think we had some significant concerns, and, and some of the bathrooms were being shut down, not out of any disciplinary challenge, but because they weren't functioning anymore, and we had to get them functioning again. So I do think I, I understand your point, and I think everyone wants as many bathrooms open as possible. And, and I do think if there are, again, particular concerns, I was very confident in how the buildings were adjusting to this and addressing this, and would also like to add my voice to yours and ask parents to be our partners in this, and to monitor their child's social media accounts. And we're seeing some of this, and what I'm also believing we are adjusting to is, our students are back in school five days a week with all of their colleagues for the first time in a while, and we're having to relearn some routines and how to be a community again. Again, Mrs. Monaco, I don't want to stray too far from your point. We will have bathrooms open moving forward, but we are needing to reestablish some community rules that had been well-established prior to separating. Now, Mr. Foss, I saw you nodding your head, and I want to call you out, but I know you work in a middle school, and it's, it's just been one of those things we're having to reestablish.
Yeah, 100% agree. The devious licks, luckily, my school hasn't experienced it personally, but the students are aware of it. And the readjustment to the routines of school is, is something that everybody's going through.
Again, Mrs. Monaco, I will stress, not to distract from your point, the bathrooms will be open and available.
Okay, I appreciate that. And to parents who, especially those who let me know what was happening, and the, the burden it was putting on especially the female students, I, please keep me informed. I hope that it has been taken care of and that it won't happen again. And again, there's a new TikTok challenge, parents, so be aware. Talk to your kids. We don't, we don't want them getting in trouble because... We don't, we don't want them getting in trouble because of a silly challenge that's on TikTok. All right, that was one item. Another item, I actually have two more. One is very brief. There is a concern, and maybe you could let us know at a subsequent meeting. Kids are worried that they're not, as a result of COVID and what's happened over the past couple of years, that they're not going to be able to have proms again. And I would just like you to maybe fill us in at another meeting. And my last item, I believe, let me just look at them. Told you I got a lot of messages the last two weeks. The cafeteria, have you, have you come up with any helpful plans for the cafeteria?
Probably going to have to, if you don't mind, maybe narrow down the, the cafeteria issues that I'm aware of, or the challenges seem to be at the elementary level where we're separating the kids to, to eat lunch.
There are two problems at the, especially the elementary. I don't, I'm not sure it's a problem unless lunches are delivered at the middle school. So the problem at the elementary school is twofold. When the children are able to go through the line, they take what they want, and so only a certain amount has to be prepared because not every child takes everything. But when the lunches are delivered to the classrooms, every item has to go in the lunch. So they're, they're preparing far more food than they would under ordinary circumstances. The second problem is that after getting all that food made and packed up, is people have to run around the building delivering these things, and it just seems like there are not enough hands to get it all done. They're all working later than their, than their hours, and they're putting in way more effort than we would ever expect. And, you know, workers are going home exhausted and falling into bed, and they're, you know, it's a difficult situation. So I think we either need to find a way to have the kids pick up their food in the cafeteria or to some other way for someone else to bring it to the rooms. But preferably so that they don't have to prepare so much food that gets thrown out, or possibly bring in some help to get the food delivered. Last year, the after-school help was around, but not this year.
That's true, and then we had fewer students in the.
Right, because they were on remote.
So in, in the building. So we are making some adjustments, and I know, Bob, you've been aware of this and working on it. We have extended some hours, I know, for some of the cafeteria workers. And certainly want to start with gratitude. I think they are working incredibly hard, and it is a challenge to feed students in their classrooms as opposed to using the cafeterias. The primary reason we are using, not using the cafeterias is because that's a mask-free activity, and we can't provide the distancing that we were concerned about. We're hopeful that if we see, again, low levels of spread, if we have some vaccination approved for five- to 12-year-olds, if we see some of those situations changing, then we would, if we get new guidance, that we could begin to use some of the cafeteria spaces again, I think, in the interim. Bob, we're, I'm not sure, Mrs. Monaco, I have a solution for you exactly today. I'm certainly aware of the issue, and we are working with the CAF workers themselves and our food service director to provide some support and some changes. Did I miss anything, Bob? I just want to make sure.
No, again, through the chair, but no, I agree with everything that both Dr. Conti and Ms. Monaco said. This year is definitely different than last year. Last year, our, our staff work has definitely adapted to bringing, you know, the lunches up to the classroom, you know, we've purchased new carts, we've purchased new materials. That does bring us into a conversation that, you know, when we talk about lack of staffing, you know, in other industries, we're also talking about lack of equipment. So we're running into potential shortages of styrofoam cups and, and paper products and bagging. So even labeling lunches, again, this is additional work. So, yeah, we, we have approved some additional hours. We're definitely shifting support from building to building as needed, if needed. But again, we're experiencing some staffing issues as well, too, looking for new subs. You know, my concern, of course, is putting upwards of 200, 300 students into a cafeteria and not providing that spacing when they have their mask off. But again, it's, it's kind of the situation that we're in, and as far as additional staffing, I would say obviously all hands on deck. If, if there are people in the buildings that do have a few extra minutes, a concern potentially would be is students going down to the CAF to get their lunch and then coming back. I mean, yeah, we may see some spills on the floors, but I think ultimately it's going to be a time concern. I mean, we'll probably lose 15 to 20 minutes just in the walk there and back. So that may have to look at, you know, either impeding some class time or extending lunchtime. So, I mean, we are discussing it and looking at some of the logistics. There isn't a clean answer that says put them here or do this yet.
Could you just let us know at the next meeting what you've come up with?
Yes, yes. So we'll, we'll work on it.
Thank you.
Martha?
I don't know if this is even feasible, but I'm wondering if it's possible to put some of the kids in the cafeteria. It may be worse because then you have to have a line and box, other things, but maybe just the fourth and fifth graders could be in the cafeteria, and then there would be enough room to space them out, and then there'd be two grades that wouldn't need the meals to be delivered. So I don't know if that's workable because it may involve setting up too many things, but if the, if the timing can be worked out or whatever, just wanted to throw that out as a possibility. And I also want to thank, I mean, obviously, the cafeteria workers are doing, I mean, they're working overtime in their moment, even if they're not working extra minutes, you know, it's a lot, and they've been doing it for, like, the rest, you know, it's like the rest of the pandemic, it's been going on for a long time. It's not like we see an end in sight right now, and so I want to thank all of them as well.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything further that they would like to bring forward this evening? Appears we don't have need for an executive session tonight, so the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, that passes 5-0, and we are adjourned.